Good evening and welcome to the August 2025 Orange Board of Selectmen meeting. In the event of an emergency, finally a large crowd. You can go up this stairway here, which would lead you out to the rear parking lot of Town Hall. If for some reason you couldn't go up that stairway, you go down the hallway out the back, which would lead you to the parking lot between the Town Hall and the firehouse. Or you could go up the stairway through the double doors behind the wall with the clock on it and out the front will put you out on the Orange Center roadside of the Town Hall. With that said, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They didn't give you a microphone. I'll have to give you mine. Okay. Okay, we'll start introductions. We'll start on that side tonight.
Good evening and thank you for being here. PJ Shanley.
Judy Smith.
Ann Denny, Secretary to the Board.
John Corangelo.
Bill Crowe.
Mitch Goldblatt.
Owen Weaver, Town Council.
Thank you. Okay, everybody knows who they are tonight. That's a good thing. Public participation, public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item, and they allow two minutes per speaker. Who's first? Nobody? There you go, Chief. I actually am going to plug your event, but it's better if you do it.
Hi, good evening. Juan Dumas, 307 Great Oak Road. I'm also here as the Chief of the Orange Volunteer Fire Department. First and foremost, we, on behalf of the men and women of the Orange Fire Department, we'd like to thank the community and all of the elected officials, not only the ones seated here, but all the boards and commissions who helped us during the carnival. They volunteered nights in helping us get the fundraiser to be a success this year, which it was. But secondly, and most importantly, a reminder that this is our 100th year of service, volunteer service to the town, and we're celebrating. And on the weekend of September 12, 13th, and 14th, we're going to be hosting the Connecticut State Firefighters Association's convention in conjunction with our 100th anniversary. Each of you have a letter that I placed before you before you came in, inviting the Board of Selectmen to sit on the reviewing stand. It's the first time in 142 years that Orange has hosted this event for the state. There will be a parade on September 14th, which is going to result in some closing of streets and roads, and we're trying to get that out as best as we can. We're basically going to follow the same parade route that the tractor parade takes. We're going to line up at Wolf Park, and we're going to use Ridge to Meeting House to Orange Center, and we're going to end at the Community Center on the power line side because the fair people will be setting up the fair that weekend. We don't want to interfere with that. The parade will be judged by the Connecticut Parade Marshals, and there's, right now, we have over 40 fire departments from across the state of Connecticut and two from the state of New York coming to participate, and there are several marching bands. And Mr. Pasani, just a reminder to you that the Wolf Park will be occupied by several fire apparatus and marching units that morning. They'll start lining up around 8:00 AM, and we expect the parade to be done, it kicks off at noon, and we expect it to be done around 3:00 PM. So, thank you.
Will the, the people can line Orange Center Road, Meeting House Lane and all as they do for the tractor parade to view it, but will the apparatus and all that march in the parade be available for viewing? We've been asked afterwards.
Good question. Also for spectators, because parking is limited, and I know spectators like to line up in various places, parking will be in the back area of the pool, and we're running a shuttle bus. Winkle Bus has donated two buses for spectators and marching units. If they want to park their private vehicles over there and get on a shuttle bus and be dropped off along the parade route to watch the parade, they can do that. This way, there's no problems with parking. You don't have to walk a long distance with your chairs. And yes, at the end of the parade, the parade will end about 3:00. The apparatus are going to be lined up in the parking area underneath the power lines so you can see all the apparatus, and the trophies will be awarded to the winning, as I said, it was a judge trophy, so there's about 100 trophies that they're going to be giving out for marching units and apparatus and such forth. So the trophies are being awarded at 5:00 PM. So we'll be there for a little while.
All day.
You can see the apparatus, yeah.
Okay.
And the commemorative coins are a gift from the Fire Department. We bought only 200 of those this year, so we're going to be selling them at the event, but those are a gift to you folks.
Out of curiosity, because somebody else asked us about commemorative coins. We've had that discussion this week, too. How much are they for sale for?
$15.
Okay. I think that's, we were thinking the same. That's what it was. Okay, thank you. All right. Very good. All right, public participation.
Good evening, Selectmen. My name is Melissa Johnston. I live at 451 Herbert Street. I'm here to ask for more information about the automated enforcement cameras that are planned for Orange. I heard the First Selectmen told a resident recently that they're already up and running. I certainly applaud that if they are, because speeding and disregarding road rules are an issue in our town. But I wonder if the nomenclature being used between traffic cameras and red light or automated enforcement cameras is confusing the issue, so I would like a clarification. If we do have automated enforcement cameras going up, I don't think residents know where they're located or where the revenues will go from them. I've watched the agenda for the Board of Selectmen for many months, and I don't believe this is something that has come before the Board. Does it need to be approved by the Board in order to be implemented? I've certainly heard from families recently who are concerned about speeding on our roads.
Hold on just a minute, sorry.
I'm hoping you can help clarify what's planned, what's implemented, or what the process might be to get it done. Thank you very much for your help.
You would have to request that from the Police Commission.
From the Police Commission?
Yep.
Oh, okay, that's fine. I will do that and then let everybody else know.
That's good. That's what I just said.
Okay.
The Police Commission handles that. There are license plate readers are what are up currently. Some are on Route 34, some are on Route 1, some are on Marsh Hill, some are on Indian River. The recorder for them rings when there's a plate they're looking for or a plate that triggers. They're mounted on the wall in the dispatch center. Is there anybody else?
I'm Sheila Malay. I live at 1003 Rainbow Trail, and I'm here to address short-term rentals. We are 15 to 20 minutes from a beach, and this makes Orange an attractive short-term rental area. Our community thrives on stability, connection, and respect for one another, and short-term rentals threaten all three. When a house becomes a short-term rental, it's no longer a home, it's a business. It's an investment property. When homes turn into revolving doors, strangers and strangers, we lose the sense of safety that comes from knowing your neighbors. We are subject to more noise, more late-night disruptions, because guests are here for vacation not to be part of our community. The short-term rental people are not invested in our town. They don't volunteer at the country fair. They don't volunteer at the firehouse, and they don't look out for our kids. The friendly wave across the street is gone, replaced by a new car every week. They're here for a week or a weekend, and then they're gone. This erodes the very fabric of our community, the sense of belonging that makes our town so special. They're also taking housing stock off the market, making rentals more expensive, and impacting young families' ability to buy houses in this community. Let's talk about our local businesses. Our local businesses thrive on the steady, predictable patronage of our residents, not the fleeting whims of tourists. We risk losing the character, the trust, the stability that make Orange special. This is our home, not our hotel or a B&amp;B district. That's why we need to stand together to stay. Short-term rentals do not belong. It's already started, and we'd like it to stop now. I urge you all to consider this. Let's work together to find a solution that protects our homes, our communities, and our future. Thank you.
I'll address this now, since some of you are probably here for that same thing. Short-term rentals do not fall under the Board of Selectmen. There is a meeting scheduled for August 25th by the Zoning Board of Appeals. A complaint was put in against the house on Ridgeview Road, which is working as a B&amp;B. The complaint was heard. The zoning officer issued the violation notice. Once they receive the violation notice, they are allowed to appeal that to the zoning enforcement officer's decision to the Zoning Board of Appeals. They have filed for that. They are appealing it on August 25th, I believe it is. At that meeting is where you have your opportunity for short-term rentals or Airbnb rentals or whatever other title may carry it. It is then, once that one, I believe, will be a good place for you to start. However, the zoning commission, Airbnb housing is not allowed in the residential districts in town. When something isn't listed as an allowed use, then it's not allowed. That is not listed as an allowed use. Zoning is going to address that to make that a little bit more forward. However, the people that are having this one on Ridgeview, and it is not the only one in town as we do more research into it, had the right to file an appeal to the, on the decision of the zoning enforcement officer. It's the law. So that will be going to them on August 25th, and that is where you should entertain your thoughts as far as Airbnb-type housing, because the Board of Selectmen does not do that. Tonight, it is on the agenda for executive session, and the reason for that being there's the potential for a litigation, and to bring the Selectmen up to date, since they've been receiving a lot of emails, as have I, and they've all questioned me, so that will be our discussion there. There is no vote in executive session, there's not going to be a vote on it, and there's no vote for legal expenditure on it because it's a line item in the budget. So that's how that's going to be, so you're not going to miss out on anything there, but you need to be at the meeting in this room on August 25th, as far as Airbnb-type housing. Is there anybody else for public participation?
I just want to ask a question, though, because you're saying that the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on the 25th is the meeting, but that's just a specific.
For one.
One violator.
Yep.
That's not going to resolve the issue of Airbnb.
No, then zoning will address that.
Yeah, it's going to have to go to the Zoning Board, which will have, you have to public, if they're going to change anything.
Correct.
They'll have public hearings, which will take probably several months.
Possibly.
Okay.
Yep.
I want to clarify that for people, that the 25th is not going to necessarily be the end-all of this.
No.
Maybe for one.
It may be the end-all for one.
Okay.
And Mitch, as you know, being zoning many years, this type of use is not permitted in the residential zone. If it's not permitted, it is prohibitive, but I believe the Zoning Board is going to go on the offense and create new text amendment to make it very clear that it is not allowed. It's prohibitive. And that's an opportunity, those public hearings, when they're creating legislation for public input. And that's very important, that the residents that care about these short-term rentals, you need to be at those public hearings. Give us, give your input to the Zoning Board, and they can craft very protective legislation.
Judy, I, if I may, Judy, I agree, but I also understand that the prohibitive or not permitted makes it prohibitive is not necessarily the law anymore in Connecticut because it was a case that overturned that. So therefore, I think the way we're going to have to attack, if it is the decision and it is the desire of the Zoning Board to outlaw Airbnbs, we can't just sit back and say, it's not permitted, therefore it's prohibited. I think we actually have to go a step further than the legislature's allowed us to do. So I agree that the public hearing is the place to be seen and heard, but that's not even been scheduled yet because it's going to take some drafting of legis, notice, drafting of ordinance from, you know, or change the regulations from the town attorney to start with, I think. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, name and address, and then go from there.
So notwithstanding everything you just said, I'm going to talk about short-term rentals. My name is Ruth Friedman. My husband Barry Wasserman and I moved into 266 Courier Drive just shy of 26 years ago, so we're the new kids on the block in Orange. And I want to talk about short-term rentals generally. I'm in an interesting position because we happen to own a house in Massachusetts, a family house, that we do short-term rentals. And a couple of years ago, the town of Greg Berington decided to add regulations to it, and we were not thrilled. It turns out, having a regulated short-term rental policy is not a bad thing. First of all, it allows us to keep our family house. Second of all, it's revenue for the town. We are licensed, we pay to the town. The town has, under those regulations, the right of inspection, health, safety, all that. It's a way to contain it. We can only rent our house out for 150 nights a year. No noise is allowed after 8:00 PM, before 8:00 AM. And I know the Zoning Board's going to take this, but it may come to a bylaw at some point, so I wanted to raise it as a, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, but it absolutely needs to be controlled. So that's the first thing, just to put that out. So the other part that is of a concern to me has been at least the perception of how the town leadership has handled the complaint about this. The town leadership has asked the neighbor to, you know, why she's keyboarding it. Well, social media is the thing now, and it should be. It's our form of the town crier. Why do you keep complaining? Well, because nothing's happening. I've seen a claim, let's not make it political. Well, I don't know if you're thinking political, capital P or lowercase p. It's all political, and it's affecting our lives. I noticed in the complaint, the person posting was saying that she's a Republican and she has regularly voted for the First Selectmen. I'm not, and I didn't. But I would expect, all of us, if we have complaints, to be treated in a way that is more respectful than, at least it has come out, I don't know how it was intended, because this is our town and we are going to have differences about it. But if we feel that our point doesn't matter, that's a reflection on the town, on all of us. So as you consider this issue, whether you are pro, con, or somewhere in the middle on short-term rentals, I think it's important that when people make a complaint, especially when it affects their feeling of safety in this town, things happen, and they happen not behind the scenes with, we're talking to them.
You have to wrap it up.
But to get it done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lauren Gray. I live at 205 Wilson Road, and I want to speak today about two public safety concerns and also about the tone and professionalism of our town leadership. I understand we're addressing this at planning and zoning, and I do plan to be active in that conversation. I am against the short-term rentals. I do think it's a safety issue. None of us need neighbors partying until 4:00 AM and driving home drunk. I really think the town has a responsibility to address this before something worse happens. And I think the town, whether that be planning and zoning or somewhere else, has the responsibility to act now. My second concern is addressing speeding and safety on my road, Wilson Road, and other streets in Orange. I've talked to a lot of parents, I've been knocking a lot of doors, and we've noticed traffic has increased, speeding has increased, and unfortunately, walking my baby down the street, he was right beside me, holding my hand, a car was not paying attention, swerved so close to us, speeding, just had to slam on brakes, jerk him, you know, beside me, so that was very scary. Other towns are using gradual speed bumps or signage to slow drivers down, and I'm wondering, what are the plans here in Orange? What are we doing? And I really don't want these issues dismissed. I really think this should be taken seriously. And unfortunately, when I've asked about this issue and other issues, I have not gotten any answers from the First Selectmen, which brings me to my third concern, professionalism and respect. When residents bring up serious issues and when we have questions, we do deserve answers, transparency, and accountability. And when the First Selectmen responds with email received, you don't know anything about me, or is that the best you can do? That's not leadership. That's very dismissive, and it's not something I appreciate receiving as a mom, as a resident, and as a constituent. So I really think this undermines public trust, and I really think these topics, short-term rentals, neighborhood speeding, and community trust, should be met with responsiveness, professionalism, and respect. So I really hope to see the Board of Selectmen address all of these issues when it comes to short-term rentals, speeding, and professionalism. Thank you.
And one of your neighbors complained about the cars also, and two of the cars, one is a white Infiniti, which we know where it lives, and one is a Audi Q3 that lives in your neighborhood also, were two of the cars that were spotted as speeding cars through your neighborhood. They're your neighbors, and there's the two plates from a person in your neighborhood who wrote them down, and Audi, I think it's a white Infiniti, and it's a silver Audi Q3, were the two that one of your neighbors, very close to you, gave to me. I'm just letting you know, you're acting as if we don't follow through on these things. We do follow through on them. And as far as your email, you need to remember, you stated part of what transpired, not all. I was a little bit aggravated with a couple of things that were going on, not involving you. I used the wrong tense of the word "no." I put "no" instead of "know," and you decided to check my grammar on it and send back with a comment. Nope, stop, my turn.
It's in my.
My turn. So you decided to do that, but you only list part of it when you stand here and speak. So you wish to correct me. You came up to me at the farmer's market the night I was there because Nate went home sick, and you attacked me about the flag for the, yes, you did.
I said I was just.
All right, well, anyhow, you did. So that's why you don't get answers from me, Lauren. You're not gonna.
I would like to say I would not attack you at the farmer's market.
None of them were here.
I said I'm really disappointed.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not interested in taking down the price line.
Go ahead.
This was never addressed by the First Selectmen.
Hold on a second.
I did want to know why. I did not attack you.
All right, you're done. Thank you.
And we see the way he addresses constituents clearly, and this is really exceptional.
Go ahead.
Which mic?
They both.
This is my, yeah, they both picked. It's my first town meeting, so.
All right. Mark Maturro, 412 Clark Lane, so now you all know where to find me. Before, before I start bitching and moaning, I want to just say that my wife comes from Monroe, so an even sleepier town than this. They call it Fun Row. I come from New Haven, though, a pretty nasty part of New Haven. So Orange, to me, is a paradise, and I'm really happy and I feel privileged to live here. So I'm going to just, it's, I have no notes, it's just a timer, because I didn't come prepared.
That's all right.
But I do want to address the short-term rentals because I am in the beeline of when someone comes from that house on Ridgeview, decides to go for a liquor run, and then smashes into my house, because my house directly faces.
Opposite of Clark.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the unfortunate thing is, we don't live in a high-trust society anymore, and unfortunately, something like Airbnb should be possible, because it should be possible if you have an extra room in your house, you want to rent it out to a traveling nurse. I know Orange doesn't have beaches, but if you have a beach house that you're not in, you want to rent it out to a family for a week, which is a lot cheaper than them going down to Cape May for a family that can't afford it. But a town like ours that's residential, I don't think it's possible at all. I understand that the person that was up here before that has the Airbnb in Massachusetts, you're not the person I'm addressing, because you seem like a high-trust person, someone that I would want in my society and in my town. What I've gathered so far from this town is that it's really close-knit, even though it's kind of sprawled out geographically, it's really close-knit with everybody else, and I don't really want to have that ruined. So if we could, you know, see you on the 25th, and we'll see what happens.
And then zoning meetings as.
Well, the one, the one thing I wanted to address, too, is just really quick, I don't want to live in a place where someone in a municipality could just take your property from you either. That happened to my grandfather in New Haven when they built a new school. They used eminent domain laws. So I know that the town has to go about this in a kind of a careful way, even though there was some laws on the books already. It seems like more powerful laws want to be written, but I also know it's going to take time. So, because you wouldn't want the town coming into your house, taking half of your yard for something either, so it's kind of a nasty toss-up.
I don't.
And I don't envy anybody, I don't envy anybody here that has to deal with the lawyers from that slumlord, so, thank you.
It's interesting.
Good evening. Erica Higgins, 303 Drummond Road. I'm pivoting a bit. For years, we've been told the pool has issues. The aging boiler, the lack of dehumidification, the deteriorating railings, they're all on the list. Yet here we are, still talking about the same problems, still asking the same questions, and still waiting. We know the air temperature for swimmers is for swimmers, not spectators. My son's in that pool six days a week, but the balcony is stifling. The railings are rusting, the air handler that could be fixed, and it's a few years away from being fixed, it's far too long. We're told pool maintenance is expensive, but the facts remain. The boiler still hasn't been replaced, proper dehumidification still hasn't been installed, and the air handler is, still isn't purchased because of an electrical upgrade that we've known about for years but haven't done anything about. This isn't just about comfort, it's about opportunity. Hundreds of swimmers from across the region come here for meets. Plus, our own townspeople use it every day. With the right upgrades, we could attract more events, bring in more rentals, and generate more revenue for the town, helping maintain the facility and support other programs. And we do not need another ARAC meet in the middle of January where we have 400 swimmers in a pool where we almost had to shut down the meet because it was almost 72 degrees. We've also been told there's no intent to bond for these repairs. Why? If we have problems, know the solutions, and understand the benefits, why are we refusing to take the steps needed to fund them? We don't need vague timelines. We need real plans this year to fix the boiler, improve the quality, and makes the space usable for everyone. A 50-year-old building won't last another 50 if we keep delaying the basics. On the list is not a plan, it's a stall. We have the problems, and we know the solutions, and we have a responsibility to the people of the town. Let's stop waiting for someday and start tonight. Thank you.
How are you? Good, how are you?
Good.
Mitch's neighbor, actually. My name's Christopher Nicholas. I live at 308 Fairleigh Road. I just want to touch up on the short-term rentals. You know, the issue on Ridgeview Road makes me sick to see it happen, and I just hope we can toughen the law, enforce the law, collect the fines. I could relate to this woman that's been all over Facebook talking about this in her neighborhood because next door to me is a rental. Little different situation with that rental, I believe it's long-term, but, you know, these VRBOs, Airbnbs, they're popping up all over the map. It doesn't matter where you live now, they're all over. You know, having grown up in Milford, right down the street from where I am now, and moving to Orange, I expect a better quality of life, and, you know, I could relate to this because of this rental next door to me, and actually, the owner of that rental owns five of these in town. Most of those homes he owns are not very aesthetically pleasing. So I ask, you know, the penalties be stiffened for this and to outlaw these, if it's not already outlawed. And, you know, it shouldn't be political, it should all be about looking out for ourselves, neighbors, and getting the job done to maintain the quality of life in Orange. Thank you.
Very good. Too slow, Dan.
Wait over here. Just wait, just wait.
Hey, everybody. Robert Lim, 956 Corn Cob Lane. As some of you know, I work in cybersecurity. I am Deputy Chief Information Security Officer for a Fortune 500 company. I'm also a member of FBI's InfraGuard program, which is a public-private partnership, and the idea is that the private sector has a lot of resources, public sector doesn't always have resources, so we can kind of team up and fight these cyber criminals. So I'm really here just to share a piece of, like, just like a headline, a story, that I thought might be helpful, because part of what I do is I just see what happens out in the world and just think about what lessons can we draw from it. So the story that I ran across was from a few weeks ago, and it was about a city in Canada that got hit by a ransomware attack, ended up spending $18 million on it, and their cyber insurer denied their. ended up spending $18 million on it, and their cyber insurer denied their claim, which, we all kind of know how insurers work, so that part is not necessarily surprising. But, you know, I would hate for any town to be in that situation. So I kind of dug into it a little bit more. So part of the issue was that a control that was supposed to be put into place, multi-factor authentication, so you log into a website, it texts you, or you have an app, you do that whole thing. They didn't roll it out to all their systems, and that's how the bad guy apparently got in. So it's kind of one of those read the fine print situations. This was required from the insurer. And unfortunately, they just had challenges rolling it out. It's not popular with users, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's important. So that's kind of one of the takeaways, which is, you know, definitely read the terms of your insurance, and I'm sure the team here has done that. The second thing is, on the topic of kind of multi-factor authentication and how ransomware kind of works now. So the statistics are, the attacks are less frequent, but the impact is of more impact. And the reason for that is because when the bad guys get in, they spend a lot of time just watching what happens, so they can kind of more convincingly lure people into doing things they normally wouldn't do. And that's what happened to the New Haven Public School System. Basically, the chief financial guy got his account hacked, and the attackers knew what their lawyer, town's lawyer were, their bus suppliers, all of that information. And it allowed them to craft believable emails to lure people into changing, you know, the bank account and the payment. So as I try to wrap up here, one of the things that makes it more believable is people actually compromise real emails. So if, you know, Mr. Ziole gets an email from somebody, you know, pretending to be Vincent Marino and just says, like, hey, look at this file, he might be more enticed to click. So those are a couple of.
That does, that does happen, Rob.
Right, yeah.
That absolutely has happened. There's many people out there that get scammed, because they don't, you read the first part of the email when it pops up and you say, oh, Joe Jones, what's he want today? Click. But you didn't read the whole IP that ran behind it, and it wasn't the Joe Jones that you know. So that's common.
Right, yeah. So, I mean, for everybody out there, these are things that you can think about, but I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak.
But I will tell you this, and I think you already know it, because we discussed it once before. The Orange Police Department got infiltrated with this, but luckily, our firewalls held. But we had a very large problem within the police department, and we had the FBI, national, across the board, people involved with this for, Jamie, what, six weeks, probably that was? Six or eight weeks anyhow. Fortunately, everything, our systems are very well protected, but we've heard of other communities that have had to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars or more in businesses, in ransoms, in order to unlock their systems and all. And there's no guarantee. You may pay the money, and they may still, they'll give you the finger, and you'll never see them again, and your system won't be unlocked. So it's a very scary thing. So even those of you at home should have good firewall systems on your own computer systems at home, never mind just at businesses, because a lot of people work remotely, and they say, well, I'm working from home part of the time and part in the office. Well, you better have it at home as well as at work. So thank you for that.
Good point, yeah.
Dan.
Dan Fitzmorris, 831 College Road. And I do want to thank everybody who's here and speaking, maybe for the first time. It is hard to do it, it takes guts. But as a reminder, this is your town and your town hall. Every member of the Board of Selectmen represents you, and you definitely deserve to tell them what you think, what you need, concerns you have. I myself have been raising a concern quietly behind the scenes for a few months, but this morning, I decided I had to speak about it, because I witnessed another car accident on Route 34. I live right on Route 34, and I have a 10-year-old and a 13-year-old, and I'm terrified about the thought that they're going to get behind a wheel soon. In 2023, the state of Connecticut passed a law that allows towns like ours to install automated traffic enforcement cameras for speeding and red light violations. It's common across the country. The process is crystal clear. You could read it on the state website. Before the cameras can be used, the police department must carefully identify locations and submit a full plan to the State Department of Transportation. Part of this process is that the Board of Selectmen must pass an ordinance to authorize the police department to do that. Our police department has done everything the state law requires, to a T. They've even found a vendor, the same one Milford is using, to potentially install and operate those cameras without any direct cost to the town. Those vendors just take a small share of the citation. The police department finished this work, to my knowledge, five months ago. And they've been waiting on this Board of Selectmen to pass the ordinance. Many other towns didn't wait. The small town of Washington, Connecticut, with 3,600 residents, they were the first to install these automated traffic enforcement cameras. And you may have read in the news the other day that they've already in two months had 6,200 citations, totaling $334,000 in fines. It's a big number. Most importantly, the town leaders made it clear that the speeds have come down significantly. Let me just read the other towns. Marlborough, Middletown, Greenwich, Weathersfield, Hamden, Milford, New Haven, Stamford, and Stratford are all in the process of doing this. So that's 10 towns ahead of us, and I think we should have been in the front of the line. The police have done their job, I hope the Board of Selectmen will do theirs. Thank you so much.
Next.
Good evening. Laurel McCarson, 546 Street Lane. Had to edit a little bit, because I am also addressing short-term rentals. Just saying, we've been Orange residents for over 20 years and consider ourselves very blessed to be able to raise our daughter in this community. Our schools are great, our neighbors are great, and we've just loved living here. But hearing about the type of activity that has been occurring at 473 Ridgeview Road over the past couple of months seems like it's a detriment to our small-town way of life. I'm really disturbed to find out the slew of weakly occupants of this rental property. We're continually breaking town noise ordinances and harassing neighborhood homes, even making lewd sexual comments to teenagers. It's like it's a frat house party every weekend, and it needs to get shut down. I will be at the zoning meeting on the 25th. I thank you for letting us all know that that's happening. But I just, I just couldn't sit here, sit by, and say nothing as my street and yours could be next. There's a house only a few doors up from me that is currently for sale. And if the practice of short-term rental properties isn't shut down, the same drunken, disorderly, and disgusting behavior could be polluting my neighborhood or yours. I'm praying that our planning and zoning department will take Orange citizens' concerns to heart and do everything in its power to shut down the practice of short-term rentals in our little town. And give an outline to residents on how they will plan on fighting this and give us an outline of, and timeline of how that will happen. I want to thank everybody here tonight for listening. I especially would like to thank Mr. Goldblatt. I did send an email to all of the board last week, and Mitch was the only one to return my email at all. Thank you.
Next. Yes.
Am I supposed to sign something?
No, you just say.
Okay. Joyce Polio.
What's her name?
259 High Plains Drive. I've probably been in Orange before most of you were born. That said, when I bought my house on High Plains Drive, I was told by two real estate agents, don't buy on that road. During the Fireman's Carnival and the.
Fair.
And the fair in September, you will never be able to make a left out of that road. And for 14 years, I've been wanting to tell the fire department and the police department, no problem. We have never had a problem, they really know what they're doing, and I'm very proud of them. And could you pave our road? It really, it needs to be.
That's not up to me, that's public work.
Who do I say, public work?
Donnie.
Okay, thank you.
Donnie. Is there anybody else? Mrs. Shaw?
Waiting for that. How could you do it to a fellow Ranger fan? Good evening, my name is Mary Shaw. I'm the town clerk for the town of Orange, and I am here to talk about municipal election that's coming up on November 4th. So a lot of students are heading back to school and may need to register for vote before they go. So I'm encouraging them all to stop by town hall, go online, or mail in to register to vote. Stop by, the registrar voter's office or mine, and we'll make it a quick and easy exit from the building before you head back. Secondly, those students, or anyone for that matter, that might be absent from the town of Orange during voting periods, even early voting, can apply for an absentee ballot anytime. It's a simple, I even brought some. So it's, fill it out, you drop it off at my office. And when it comes time to mail out ballots, which is October 3rd, we'll mail it to the address that you indicate, and you can easily vote while you're away from town. And lastly, I have to say, I want to remind all our residents, the town clerk's office is, in this small town, a place you can always come and get information. We are welcoming our residents' call and visit when they are looking for any town information and some really unconventional things. It kind of is inherent with the job. So I want to remind everybody that we are here and we're committed to guide our residents, or anybody calls, because we answer the phone, and our walks in the door, that we are going to help them as best we can in a personalized manner. And I, if we don't know the answer, we'll get it for you. Did I do it under two minutes?
You did.
So absentee ballots, registered vote, call my office, get your students, you know, on board before they head back to school, all right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Rob, hold on.
For the absentee ballots, do you still need a reason?
This year you do, but next year you won't. So there are six reasons I'm here, so you fall into the.
You can always come up with a reason.
Yeah. If you fit into one of those reasons, it's easy to fill in the cell. All right, thank you, everyone.
Kevin McNabola.
Good evening, Kevin McNabola, Board of Finance, 290 Courier Drive. I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to thank Jim and the Board of Selectmen for putting together a fiscal sustainability commission of the volunteer fire department. The volunteer fire department, by far, is one of the greatest assets that we have in this town. It's an asset that you won't find on a balance sheet, but it delivers results every day. And I was happy to serve on that commission, to develop a plan, not only for the short term, but also the long-term fiscal sustainability of the volunteer fire department. Many, for those of you who don't know, throughout the state, there's 50% reduction in volunteer firefighting over the last seven years. Nationally, it's 56%. So it's going to be a challenge going forward, and I hope Jim and the Board of Selectmen will continue to, you know, with the Fiscal Sustainability Committee and the Board of Finance, to continue to monitor and develop plans on how we keep the volunteer fire department sustainable. Because going to a paid department in Orange, for me, is not an option. Not an option.
You moved away from that, for that reason.
Yeah, exactly. Take a point, example, West Shore Fire Department, which is a relatively small department, 45 firefighters, which is what Orange, in my calculations, would need to cover a town of this size. We would, we would need to have personnel and salaries, pension. And in West Shore, that budget is $12.6 million. 8.6 million is salaries, pension, and benefits, which is almost 70% of the total budget. That would equate to probably between a 6% and an 8% or mil rate increase within Orange alone. So I would ask all our residents, all our council members here, to continue to invest in the volunteer fire department with donations, and continue to do that, so we don't have to eventually go to a paid department. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. That was a good commission, and they did accomplish a lot. I appreciate your time and effort, and everybody who worked on that. Next. No more? Just so, you're going to try again?
I would sign in on the sign-in sheet, I don't know where it went. One more minute, and I apologize. My name is Lauren Gray, 205 Wilson Road. I just want to say, no matter where you are in town as an elected representative, we should feel comfortable approaching, asking questions, emailing, and getting respectful answers. And when I approached the selectmen at the farmer's market, I asked a question that did not come across in an attacking way. But I appreciate the respect that I do get from some of the selectmen who have answered my questions and responses. And everybody in this town, no matter who you are, no matter where you live, deserves to be treated with respect and dignity. And I love this town, I'm raising my three children here, and we are so proud to be here. We love our neighbors, but we do deserve respect from our town leadership.
And just for those of you that are here with all the talk that started for Ridgeview Road, I don't know of any of the other selectmen, I can't speak, but Mitch and I were meeting the other day. And Mitch and Abby were down Ridgeview Road, I think, once or twice at different times over the weekend. I was down there twice on Saturday, once in the afternoon in another vehicle, once in my own town vehicle on Saturday evening, Sunday evening. And we've traveled there several times. And then Monday morning, I went down there to see the condition of the property about 10:30-ish, I'm going to say, and I had my intern with me, so he could see what was going on with this also. And it was all quiet, all cleaned up. On Sunday evening, the trash barrels were full. They were over on the side, on the left side of the driveway, but they were full and somewhat overflowing. On Monday morning, when we went through there, they were all pulled out to the curb. They were all pressed down, the lids were all closed, the recycle was out there, the cardboard was out there. But we have been checking on it, just so you know. Both Mitch and I have been up and down that street multiple times since this complaint process started. So we don't want you to think that we have not been there. And both of us have conversed on it, and both of us have been there viewing it. And that's also why I brought the intern with me, so that he would understand this, because he's been also following this issue. So with that said, Mitchell.
Go ahead. One other thing just was brought up in the public session. I don't want the public to think that this board has not done anything about red light or speeding cameras, because Jim, if there's been a report that's been out for five months, if it really has been, we haven't been privy to it. So I don't know if there's anything you need to, you don't have anything to bring to us? Okay, because I want to make sure people don't think, this board's not sitting on that, because this board has not been presented any information to make any recommendations or ordinances at this point.
And we have had some.
Okay, so.
We've had some health issues of those that might do it. So I can check on that with others, but ones who should. One is out again now for the rest of this week, again after surgery.
Just keep us all posted, thank you.
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public participation at this table? Anybody have anything? Seeing none. We have a few here. Jane Laird, I don't know how many at this table will remember Jane Laird. I know Mitch and I and Judy do for sure, but Jane Laird passed away. She was the secretary to the selectmen for like 50 years. She passed away at 96, a couple of weeks ago. Had no family or anything, and sometimes that's kind of sad. But, yeah, Jane was with us for a long, long time. She was 96. And Evelyn McGrath was buried today. She worked with the OVNA, she was a nurse. She worked in the New Haven Hospital system years ago, and then she volunteered with the OVNA here. And she was buried today, and our thoughts go out to Kathy and the family. She was 103. Yeah. And then Kathy Terrell, who was a lifelong resident of this town, was born here, lived in the house. Their house was actually what is now Citizens Bank, before it was blown out all over, was where she grew up, and she lives on. was where she grew up, and she lives on Norman Street. And Kathy unfortunately had a fall this week by accident and passed away day before yesterday. And our thoughts go out to all the Torello and Monk family on that one. Yes, Mitchell?
One more?
Go ahead. Who'd I miss?
Yeah, Dr. Satish Chandra, who served one, yeah, one term on the Amity Board of Education. Did pass, I think he was in his 90s as well.
He was?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know he passed. Okay. So, anyhow, our thoughts were with all of those families and their loss. Again, thank you, the chief already said it, to all the volunteers and departments that helped with the Make the Fireman's Carnival success. There's going to be some aggravations with that parade, which is the week before the fair, and it's going to bottle up Meeting House Lane and Orange Center Road for a while. But all I can say is come and enjoy the parade. Otherwise, don't use Orange Center Road on that Saturday afternoon, midday, or Sunday midday and afternoon. That's on the, Sunday the 14th. Monday, August 25th, is the first day of school for Amity and the Orange Elementary Schools. So, let's think about that. The buses will be back on the road full force for that. Town offices and the transfer station will be closed on Monday, September 1st in observance of Labor Day. So, all offices and the transfer station will be closed on the 1st. Thank you. Minutes. To consider an act on the minutes of the July 9th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If there's any errors, omissions, or corrections, please state, page, and paragraph.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, stamed, unanimous. New business. Item number one is to consider an act on request to conduct block party in the Shagbark Drive and Indian Hill Road neighborhood. Sylvester Salcedo is representing that request. Sylvester is in the audience. Would you like to speak to it, or you're just going to let us act to it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Just as pro forma request. I just came to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Anybody have?
It's not going to be wild. It's going to be family focus, and there will be no artwork by any Filipino display.
Is there a motion on that one? I'm not even touching it.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Posed, abstained, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Sylvester.
Thank you.
Item number two is to consider an act on the request from the Connecticut Yankee Council to use the High Plains Community Center and fairgrounds and grounds and building and all that goes with it for ConJam 2028. Jeff, you are very efficient. You just finished out one, and you're ready for the next. Any questions for Jeff on the ConJam 2028?
Motion approved.
Jeff or Ben? Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't have that calendar. To consider an act on proposal for an updated Eagle View, which is the pictometry flyover. Jamie Vincent, our fire marshal, is here tonight on that one.
Good evening, everybody. John, keep the bell on the table, would you?
Nope.
I know in your path, you guys received a proposal for a new flyover. Just to give you a brief overview, the Eagle View program, what it is, is basically the former fire marshal, Tim Smith, used to say, it's kind of like Google Earth on high test. What it does allows us to view parcels in the town from five different angles, all four sides and straight down. The benefit for us as first responders is, obviously, we were able to view these properties before we have an incident as well as during. But more so for the open land parcels where we have to go in and pull kids off of who's a tonic or whatever. Myself and Max Martins years ago went in and tracked waypoints so that we can kind of use them to find out where these kids are. It's been in use since 2007. We did it in 2007. It was a huge success. We found that there was actually a benefit to it, not just for emergency response. John Sifrelli, our finance director, actually made a good point. The reason we're asking early, we normally do it every five years. But in 2007, we realized when we had the next reevaluation, we were able to kind of catch people that might have done work on their house and help the assessor do their job and generate, unfortunately, revenue, or fortunately, revenue, which offset the cost of the program. So, we did it in December of 2007. We did it again in April of 2017, and I think that's when the board said that took way too long. So, we agreed to do it every five years. So, we did do one in 2022. But the reason why we're asking early is because everyone knows we have a reevaluation coming up. And the way the program works is we can actually layer the images so we can see from previous flyovers compared to today. So, if you were to pull up my house at 42 grand, you can see my yard's all cleared out, and, you know, my neighbor next door got rid of a pool. Where, on the other hand, maybe someone put in a deck, or someone put in a pool or did an addition on their house and maybe didn't get a permit for it. So, I was charged by John to kind of look into this and see what we would get for a price. The cost for the quote that they gave us is about $900 more than it was back in 2022. And I think that the reason why we're asking early again is to maybe get an offset from the income for the assessor.
Questions for Jamie on that? Mitchell?
Jamie, your last statement about offset. So, with this, by having this pictometry, would that then reduce potentially the cost of our revale within the revale agency? I guess that's next on the agenda, coming up on the agenda. Would they normally do this, and then if we own it, they don't have to do it? We can use it all the time, then what's every four or five years?
Correct. So, if you look at the imagery that we have, we have access to it, which almost every department in the town uses. You know, I actually had Dean and Chris set up the laptop. If you guys wanted to see it, I can pull it up on the screen. But any department can certainly use it to their advantage. It's not just for first responders. The Health Department uses it to, because you can actually measure things in real time. You can measure the size of property, buildings, whatever you may need. So, like in 2023, I put a pool in my yard, and I used it to actually measure the distance from my septic system to where the pool was going. And they, the Health Department can do the same thing. The Building Department's been utilizing it. So, it is, once it's our imagery, it's our imagery, and we can use it for whatever.
Thank you.
It's a good system. Tim started with that. You know, he took a lot of explaining for me to understand it in the beginning, but it's very interesting. And I don't know, are you going to show how the plane flies over? Did you?
If you want, I can pull it up if you like.
I didn't know if you did. But they fly over. You don't really even know they're doing it. And the cameras are clicking from multiple angles as it goes over your property. They usually, they usually do it when leaves are off the trees.
Yeah, it's always November or April.
Just so you know. So, if you see planes flying over multiple times, they're probably clicking the cameras in multiple opposite directions and all. It's a very interesting system.
The other benefit to it is, as well, you can take the lay of the GIS layers from the town assessor's data, and we can see fire hydrants, water lines, gas piping. So, if we go to a call, we can find out where the hydrants are, where the shut offs are. And if someone calls our office and says, geez, do I have, you know, do we have gas anywhere near my house? We can pull it up and actually send them a screenshot of the image.
Okay, great.
Would anybody like to see his presentation of that?
I could try. Yeah, I can certainly, I already have it tool up if you want.
I think a lot of people out there don't know what it is. I mean, we know what it is because we've worked with it. But, I mean, if you can show it briefly, you know, and, yeah, I got to go on the site. Chris Kelly, are you going to help him with that? He's coming. Will, you're in charge of lights back there? No, they're right by your head. They're right by your head. There you go.
All right. So, I pulled up my house because I know I have permits for everything I did. But if, yeah. If you look at the imagery on the right-hand side, that is March of 2022. On the left-hand side is December, or I'm sorry, April of 2007. When they fly, it usually takes about two or three weeks to fly over. So, if you notice, so my house is the one with the white pickup truck in the right-hand side photo. The house to the left of mine had a pool, which is now gone in the second imagery. My backyard, the front yard, those trees are all gone. And if we did it in 2023, you'd see a pool and kids destroying the neighborhood, probably. But this is just one example of how it can be utilized specifically for the assessor's office. It's going to make their job a little easier. It's going to reduce the man-hours that they're going to need to be out on the road. But for emergency response, we can see, like I said, you can, you can angle to any, any side. You can see the back, side, left side, or straight down. So, we, you know, you really can't hide anything from us. Whereas with Google Earth, I know a lot of assessor's offices are using it, and emergency responders are using it. But the problem is those, those images, like if you look at the one on the left, that's actually a Google Earth image. You'll see that the leaves are still on some of the trees. And it's, you know, they, they only do straight down. So, you could hide a shed underneath a bunch of trees. With this program, you can't. So, like I said, it's Google Earth on high test. So, and anybody here has access to it. You know, anyone on the board that would want to use it, we can create a username and allow you to log in and try it. So.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience?
No.
Okay. Yeah. Will?
Jim, do you want me to stay up there for your next item on the agenda?
Yeah, why don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to go on that one first.
Motion approved.
Okay. All right. Where'd John go? John, they're all set with that for the pictometry? Mr. Sifrelli? Okay. Okay, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, stamed, unanimous. All right, the next one you have before you, Jamie's also going to speak to that since he's here, is to consider an act on request to authorize first selectment on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to execute the 24 State Homeland Security Grant Region Two Memorandum of Agreement.
Nice short title.
Nice short title. And these are grants that we receive quite often. Jamie, go ahead. You do it. I'll let you.
Okay, so really, all it is, is it states that the town agrees to follow the federal guidelines for applying and utilizing federal money. I will say this. Tim Borr, who's our deputy fire marshal, he took over as emergency management director in 2023, I believe it was.
Right.
And for the first time, I've been employed by the town since 1998. This is the first year, yeah, I caught Mitch at a bad moment. This is the first year where the income through the grants superseded the amount that it costs for the town to perform their function. So, Tim Borr has been doing a fantastic job. He works really hard and tries to squeeze blood from a rock, and he actually does a pretty good job of it.
Yes, he does.
So, this just is basically the town agreeing to follow the federal guidelines.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Vincent, Marshal Vincent on that one? If not, is there a motion to authorize the first selectment to sign?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, stamed, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Item number five is to consider an act on bid recommendations for implementing OFUN, a revaluation on October 1st, 2026, and in accordance with Public Act 22-74. Mark went out and did the bidding for revaluation, as you can see. And he ultimately ended up with one here that Municipal, what is it? Municipal Valuation Services LLC, aka Munival. I don't know if that's a true aka or if it's Mark's version. Sometimes he comes up with titles for things. The bid is $220,000 as the base cost of it, and then there's all à la carte items as they go through it. But it comes to a total of $220,000 that we're planning on for that. And that is for the October 1st, 2026. They have to do the grand list and do all the appraisal work and revaluation work. And the grand list starts with October 1st of each year. And then that October 1st of '26 is what your bill will be based on that you receive on July 1st of '27. Just so you understand, it's a, there's a big hoop and loop in the middle of that. But it's on the grand list record for October 1st, '26. But then it, it's what affects your bill for July 1st, '27. So, as long as everybody understands that. I think it will level out. I hope it'll level out a little bit better. But prices for homes are still, in some cases, way up there. I don't think they're going to come down much, but I hope they flatten a little bit. The last revaluation saw a lot of spiking, I'm going to call it, where there were houses that, in some of our neighborhoods, and you look at it and say, oh, they can't get more than $375, and then it sold for $550. Or a house that they looked at, said $550, went for $800. I mean, we've all heard those stories and more. There's one right down the street over here that I thought might be $6,700, right by our farm. It's $998. I mean, you know, I guess whatever the, somebody will pay, but I just don't even have a feel for some of these. We've had houses in town this year sell for, we had one sell for $1,802,000 in a subdivision. We had one at 2.2. We had another one at 1,940,000. I mean, it's not uncommon to have houses now in Orange that are very close to $1,500,000 to $2,000,000 in some of these neighborhoods. And somebody spoke who lives on, that lady that's behind, right there, you. There is one sold on Courier Drive, near PJ's mom and all over there. Nice house. I remember when those were built way back when. Went for, I think, $998, something like that?
Over $1,000,000.
It went over $1,000,000 when it was done, on Courier Drive. I mean, yes, they're very nice.
Hey, it's a nice street.
It is. It's a very nice street, and they're nice homes. But I mean, this is what we're seeing. And a young man said to me, and I got to, I'm going to throw it in here. He's 17. He's a hard-working kid. And we were driving down a street one day, and he asked, how much is that house he saw for sale? And I told him. And he said, how is somebody my age supposed to be able to afford a house here when it's time to buy a house and raise a family and all of that? And I said, you either have to have somebody who leaves you a large inheritance or leaves you a house. I said, because for a starter home for people, I just don't know how some of the young people will do it. I just don't. But that was coming from a 17-year-old who just graduated from high school, and he's already thinking that far ahead, and it's like, he's right. He's right. We have a wonderful community, and that's, it reflects it in those resale values. Okay, did we close on this one? All in favor?
Motion approved.
Wait, I have a quick question. So, the vision proposal has 20 different line items. Munival is 11. I understand with technology, they're supposed to make it, they're supposed to be able to cut the cost, but we're getting exactly the same thing, correct, for the price?
Supposed to be, according to Mark.
Obviously, big savings, but.
According to Mark. Have you ever talked with Mark?
I don't think so.
Try it.
Jim?
With the options, yeah. Yeah.
So, Jim, a question?
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Mitchell?
Yeah, could make the motion, ask for a friendly amendment, the motion approved be up to? The reason I ask that is going back to Jamie's thing he did before, because it says that, it says, "Only Municipal Valuation Services has employed modern technology to cut costs," which is a good thing. "They utilize a product called Mobile Assessor. Through comparing digital photography at different dates and time, can identify changes in property. This program is very comparable to pictometry, a product this office has used." So, if it's possible, as I'm asking John if amendment, just a friendly amendment to make it, you know, not to exceed, if there's, if there's a line item in there, we might be able to cut off a little bit if we are able to use pictometry. So.
Yeah, it's an up to number.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Is that motion a second?
Second.
I think PJ's seconded or isn't it PJ's seconded?
I thought he did. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, stamed, excuse me, unanimous. Okay, item number six is to consider an act on request to approve the Board of Selectmen's annual annual report. You have there item number six. Are there any errors or changes, Mitch?
So moved.
Okay.
Good job, Ann.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, good. I think we got it there. To consider an act on request to approve tax refunds totaling $1,863.27. I think that's one of the smallest ones we've had in a long time.
So moved.
Okay, motion's made. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stain? Unanimous. Pension Board?
Yes, the pension board meets next week. Quarterly meeting is Thursday, August 21st, at 7:00 in this room.
Okay. Very good. Fred Wolf Park, you have a meeting coming up in September?
We are waiting on our engineering firm to follow up with us, and then we will schedule a meeting to look at the master plan.
Okay. So no date yet?
No date yet.
Okay. All right. With that said, we have two items to go to executive session on. One is discussion and update with Attorney Weaver on 473 Ridge Road, and the, then that one would close. Then the other one is executive session, yeah, where, where is he? I know he came. Oh, he's down there? Okay. Attorney Ryan, a discussion on some pending other claims that he's been handling as the labor counsel for the town. So I ask you to invite Mr. Siffarelli, Mr. Ryan, Mr. And I'm actually gonna invite Mr. Keenan in on this, because he has been very involved with these in my office, so that he is fully aware of what is going on with both of these items and understands confidentiality. So with that said, is there a motion to go into executive session at 8:14, it looks like?
Excuse me. Jim?
Excuse me. Mr. Keenan is who?
He's an intern.
I object. I'm sorry. No offense. I don't feel that any member of the public who's not an attorney or part of this board should be in executive session, quite frankly.
Okay.
No offense. I just would oppose that.
All right. Well, that's fine. That's your decision. Everybody agree with that?
This is my, my thoughts. I don't know how the others feel.
All agree with that?
I mean, he's been part of the process. I don't have an objection to him sitting in. I mean, it's still a privileged.
He has been aware of all of this in the office.
It's not like this is new stuff, and he understands the privilege that comes with it. So I don't have an issue with him sitting in on it.
Hello?
Let's keep it.
It is a lawsuit. Let's just keep it to us and layers.
Okay. All right. So we'll remove Mr. Keenan from the list. That's fine. With that, we go into executive session at now 8:15. Okay, so we have come out of executive session.